Oh, that's okay. Here, I'm gonna get out of the way.
We'll call to order the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is November the 12th. On our invocation will be done by Pastor Henry Gingrich, Greenridge, I apologize, of Trinity World Christian Center. After that, we'll have Mayor Pro Tim lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Mayor, and esteemed council members. Normally, I have a humorous anecdote as part of my invocation, but considering the national nightmare we've been going through, I share with you this word from the Bible, Philippians 2, verses 3 and 4. It reads, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others." The scripture reminds us of who we are and who we want to be. I was watching the television series Building Alaska. I was noticing the use of a hammer and a mallet in construction. Hammers are used to drive in nails in the building process, but a mallet is used to make minor adjustments in the construction journey. It's a softer application. There was one scene where the door was not closing properly, so an adjustment needed to be made in the door jamb, raising it slightly. The mallet was the instrument of choice to make the adjustment. We want to, but many times because we're hurt or our expectations aren't being met, or we're just plain frustrated in relational situations, we'll use a hammer. Each of us as public servants have to make decisions, and we wrestle with the tension of being self-centered, which is our natural bias, or being service-centered, which calls us to reach for our higher angels. I close with this scripture I read previously, and I invite God to direct our actions for the sake of this community, our family, and friends. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others. Amen. United States of America, and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim, and we appreciate it, Pastor Greenridge, for the invocation. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session. I'm Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in part by teleconference. All of our elected officials are here, but because of the COVID pandemic, we do have simultaneous access to teleconference, and it's being shown on the Zoom software. It's the open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and Council. It's being conducted at teleconference consistent with the Official Code of Georgia annotated Section 50-14-1G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19. That section, which you can find posted with agenda item materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet and hold or impart by teleconference in the event of emergency, so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software, as shown on the city's website, describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken on these items discussed tonight on Monday. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the items, for agenda items, comments from citizens and delegates section for you to discuss your business, just a few protocol issues that I'd like to go over, and then we can get right into the meeting with the agenda that is presented and printed. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You'll receive a warning from the chair for the first time, and if you deviate a second time, we'll ask that you will commence from speaking. Only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers or speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation with others in the audience, or be disruptive while you're presenting. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during required public hearings, and if you have any printed material, we would ask that you would please give that to the Assistant City Clerk in the back, Ms. Candace. If you have a cellphone or other electronic devices, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or turn those off so they won't be disruptive during the meeting. Agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item. Then the person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. This will be your opportunity. Myself and council members were possibly asked clarifying questions, so that'll help us to make our decision on Monday. After that, the committee chair will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor and 20 minutes for those in opposition of those items. Each person has five minutes. Prior to approaching the podium, please give your name and address for the record, so the Assistant City Clerk will have that. There is a card that you should have filled out in the back, and if you are speaking, I know we do have a presentation that is going to be given to us virtually. They should have filled out information out online. Each person only has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're just here to hear your comments, and it'll help us to make our decisions. Please address your comments to the chair, and again, if you have any printed materials, we ask that you would hand that to the city clerk. And for the comments from citizens and delegates, we will listen to any information that has remained to city council business. Those are all of the information given for how the meeting will be run tonight. And now, I do have a presentation. It is from myself, and it will go to the folks that are going to give us a presentation, a virtual presentation tonight. And so, it is a proclamation to the District Health Director, Dr. Janet Memark, M.D., M.P.H., F.A.C.P. That's a whole lot of acronyms, Dr. Memark, and you'll have to tell us what all that means. I know she's an epidemiologist. She's a really great person. And the Deputy Director, Lisa Grossman, for Cobb and Douglas Public Health, they're celebrating 100 years in the community. And so, I will read the proclamation, and then Dr. Memark will give us a presentation on line, virtual presentation. Office of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, proclamation to honor Cobb and Douglas Public Health. In 1920, Cobb and Douglas Public Health was founded with one doctor and one nurse to primarily address infectious disease and environmental hazards, and whereas Cobb and Douglas Public Health, with their partners, promotes and protects the health and safety of the residents of Douglas County. And whereas Cobb and Douglas Public Health now have two public facilities, health facilities in Douglas County, with over 25 programs, serving a growing county of more than 146,000 residents. And whereas Cobb and Douglas Public Health is an acknowledged leader among health districts and was the first health district in Georgia and among only 2% in the nation to achieve national accreditation from the Public Health Accreditation Board in 2015. And whereas since 2000, Cobb and Douglas Public Health has employed thousands of Douglas County youth through the Power and Truth Teletruth Conference, excuse me, which was selected as a model practice by the National Association of County and City Health Officials for demonstrating exemplary qualities in response to a local public health needs. And whereas Cobb and Douglas Public Health has been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for excellence in financial reporting and budgeting each year since 2017. And whereas Cobb and Douglas Public Health was named one of Atlanta's healthiest employers by the Atlanta Business Chronicle in 2019 and 2020, in honor which benefits all of the hard-working employees. And whereas, for 100 years since its inception, Cobb and Douglas Public Health continues to be a critical strategic organization who focuses to prevent illness and injury, an advocate for healthy and equality in the community, promote optimal health, prepare for disaster response, and reduce the spread of severe infectious diseases such as the coronavirus. Then now, therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and the citizens of the city, do hereby honor Cobb and Douglas Public Health's 100th anniversary and their employees' commitment to fostering healthier lives and a healthier community, given this 12th day of November 2020. That's a whole lot to read. So let's give Cobb and Douglas Public Health a hand. Thank you so much. And now, we do have a virtual presentation by the District Health Director, Dr. Janet Memark, of Cobb and Douglas Public Health regarding the Douglasville COVID-19 update. I know we get those updates every week as council members, and Dr. Memark, I believe it's on our tablet, and I know that it's going to be on the board as well. Can you hear me, Dr. Memark?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. How are you?
Oh, we're hanging in there. So, thank you so much for our proclamation. And Lisa Crossman, my deputy is here to help me with this presentation, but we promised that we did not plan to have a pandemic in our 100th year anniversary, so we really appreciate the recognition, and we feel like we definitely earned our debt this year.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'll give you all an update when you see if I can just pick it up and work for us. All right. Let me see that okay?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Memark and Ms. Grossman, thank you so much for the mask as well that you've given to the City of Douglasville for the employees. We appreciate it.
Happy to. So glad you could put it to good use.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Not everybody says thank you, but that. So, we're happy to give them out whenever we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, let me go ahead and get started on this. So, this gives you a snapshot from last night of our case raised from Douglas County. So, you, all of you who are interested can follow this daily on the public health website. And so, what we saw yesterday was a case rate of 193 cases for 100,000 people, and that's gone for over three weeks. And so, I want to remind everybody that now, anything over 100 cases is considered high transmission. So, this is a pretty substantially high transmission. Back in, in, it was about August, July, we did hit some highs around 400. On the 400, that was extremely high at that time. But I wish I had better news, but it does seem like we're kind of back on the up slope of things. So, this gives you the case map and graph of what we've seen, and so, you can see when we had some very high cases back in August.
In July.
And we're starting to see a little bit more of an uptick that's happening over the last few weeks. Some other things that we follow and wanted to make sure that we share with everybody is the positivity rate. And so, anything under, I mean, anything zero is considered the best, but under 5% is considered to be, you know, okay, in a range that is manageable. What we've seen recently is an uptick in that positivity rate. So, for all the tests that we have done, the rates that are coming back positive has climbed up to 8.6%. It has definitely gotten as high as the 20s when we had our surges, but we do see that steadily climbing as well. Here are the number of cases that we see. It's over 4,400 in Douglas County. We tried our best to kind of split off some of the Douglasville proper numbers, but it was difficult to do all of our stats, splitting them off. So, what we know is about three-quarters of the cases are actually coming from Douglasville proper. And so, what this is from last night, but what it doesn't include is the antigen numbers. And so, antigens are another kind of immune response, and the new ways that testing is happening, and they happen more quickly. You can get results in about 15 to 30 minutes. We are seeing a steady rise in people that are preferring the antigen test over the general test that we do now. Now, the only problem with that test is that it is not as sensitive to pick up cases than the PCR test that we do at this point. But a positive is a positive. If it picks up a positive, then it's pretty sure that it is an infectious case. So, that is being counted. That all being said, the number of cases that we have is probably a little low, and is probably higher than what we're seeing because the antigen cases are not being included in the caseload. I wanted to show you a little bit of the characteristics that we see in Douglas County. When you look at the cases by age, you can see previous in the pandemic, over kind of in the orange range and purples, these were our older folks that we had cases in. And so, this is the cumulative numbers that we see over the pandemic. When you look at where the cases are concentrated, you can see it's kind of more in the southern part of the county. And so, we have Douglasville and then just a little bit part of Douglasville, a little south of there is what we're seeing. These are, I just like to show you these pinwheels. On the left side is the 4 August 18th, and that's when we started to, August 18th is my cutoff, when you start seeing the rise in the number of cases. And so, what we've seen is a steady distribution. When you look at here in these light green numbers, they're the 20s, and then here's the 30s, 20s and 30s and 40s. What we see is a pretty good range of ages, and it hasn't changed pre and post. And so, you see just little slight changes, but what it's showing is a pretty good distribution. It seems to be folks that are mostly in their 20s and 30s, that we see them out and about more, and they're actually getting infected. So, it's our 20s to 50s here in these ranges that are accounting for most of our infections. When we look at the cases by race, we try to do a deeper dive on these numbers. And so, we can see when we look at cases by race, in blacks, we had 46% that were making up the number of cases that we had, and 32% in whites. When we saw, when we look at ethnicity that was brought up, it was actually, we have about 15% that are Hispanic, and then mostly in non-Hispanic. When we look at the deaths, though, so you will remember how we had mostly our older age ranges that were affected. So, this orange range and then this peach range, that was over half the cases, and those are folks that are over 70 years old. When we include the purple in here, these are cases 60 and over, so you can see that they make up over 75% of the cases of deaths in Douglas County. And when you look at it by race, you have that whites, it probably breaks down a little bit closer to what the population looks like, but it's whites represented 52%, and then blacks represented just under 40%. So, here's one of the tables I wanted to kind of point out to you all, was that the cases that we're seeing. So, you know, we continue to see cases in different areas where people are congregating. So, if you all remember, we first had problems with long-term care facilities and nursing homes and places like that. But what we've seen now is just cases in just about every area where you're having people get together. So, churches and weddings, and we had a birthday party recently that resulted in multiple cases coming out of that. Lots of businesses and restaurants where we're seeing cases. We're also hearing a lot of just kind of a decrease in prevention practices. So, wearing the mask and washing hands and keeping distance away from each other and avoiding, you know, they say large crowds, but at this point, our cases are going up pretty rapidly. I would avoid any crowds at this point, or any, you know, just keep it within your immediate family as best you can. So, the issues that we're seeing, it's not just in our county. We are seeing critical surges throughout the country, and a lot of you may be watching that. So, we have a lot of our country, the Midwest and in the central part of the nation, but now Georgia is back on the rise as well. And today, unfortunately, you know, when we ran all of our numbers, we're seeing an increase in hospitalizations throughout our district for COVID-19, and we're also seeing the increased caseloads that are going up. So, unfortunately, what we know is if we have a large number of hospitalizations, then deaths will be following a few weeks after that. Other critical issues, and I know that everybody is feeling this right now, is COVID fatigue. We have been hammering at this for nine months and trying to, you know, socially distance and wear our masks, and we've foregone, you know, parties, and Halloween was kind of a bust, and now we got Thanksgiving and Christmas on the horizon. And this is leading to decrease in prevention measures. So, we're seeing less people wearing masks, and, you know, when people asked me today, where are we seeing a lot of this spread? And it's actually not large gatherings, it's actually small gatherings of people, people who are gathering outside of their immediate families and getting together for parties or dinner parties, and, you know, so it's smaller groups of people that are effectively spreading it to each other. Things that we're also quite concerned about is cold weather. So, cold weather is what drives people inside, and the transmission is much more effective. We know that there is a droplet component, probably that's the majority, but there is some airborne transmission that is also taking up, accounting for some of this transmission. So, making sure you're in well-ventilated areas and keeping windows open and trying to be outdoors as best you can. And then, lastly, I know I feel like we're the big party poopers, but it's, you know, holiday travel. And so, as you look at what's going on throughout the nation, even within our own state, you can see other regions have much higher rates than we do at times. And so, this cross-virilization and cross-traveling is a big concern to us of how much will be transmitted from place to place. Yeah. So, what we're asking right now is safe socializing. So, apologize. So, you know, trying our best to wear masks. So, if you're going to be gathering with family, Lisa will talk a little bit more about trying to do that safely, but, you know, trying to not have too many family members from different, outside your immediate family getting together. And so, especially if you have medically fragile people in your family, please do your best to safeguard them during this time. You know, it might have been okay if we had, you know, a few months ago tried to do this, or a few weeks ago, actually, but now we're going on to some very, very tricky times, and it's kind of, you've probably heard on the news, it's kind of a perfect storm right now, and everything is on the verge of surging, and we're adding a couple of factors in that can really make things take off. Making sure that you wear your mask. When you're not around your immediate family and household, make sure you got those masks on. Stay at least six feet apart, six at least. Washing your hands frequently. If your children are sick or you are sick, please keep them home. We are hearing some reports of people sending their children to school sick, and that's putting a lot of people in danger. And so, we ask, please keep them at home and answer the call, the public health call. If you receive a call because you are a case, a positive case, or for contact tracing, please work with us, okay? Because this is very important. The only thing we have until this vaccine is widely available is trying to quarantine and isolate people so that they can't spread the disease. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Crossman to...
Dr. Memark, can we ask questions before Lisa comes?
Sure.
Or you want to wait?
You want to do it at the end? We can do them all at the end?
I might forget. Do we?
Oh, go ahead then. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask questions and open up for the council, and then Lisa can talk to us.
Okay.
So, the first thing I want to ask was about the false negative and the positives with the antigen test versus the Q-tip nasal test. So, you're saying that that quick antigen test, my daughter had that at Savannah State, that you know in 30 minutes or an hour or something, you will not get a false positive, but you may get a false negative. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the chances of a false positive are much less likely than a false negative. So, the recommendations at this time is to do those tests only when patients have symptoms, so that you have a better chance of having a viral load, and then it can be picked up. That being said, if you do the test more frequently, like serially, once a week, some people are doing it two to three times a week on people who don't have symptoms, then that can be used more as a surveillance tool to try to catch some of the virus that's floating around. But symptomatic folks, the better test is the gold standard, which is to do the PCR test, which is yet to come back instantly. So, it's, you know, it's two different things, but they both work to help us in trying to keep this going.
Okay, and I guess what they were doing on campus is just choosing a group of people randomly and having them come in and test every other day or so. Okay, so that was that. Our capacity at the hospital, at Wellstar Douglas Hospital, are we doing okay with beds there?
So, you know, Wellstar Douglas is a small hospital, so right now, critical care beds are very, very tight. They have gone from having none to very low beds, critical care-wise. But unfortunately, we are seeing that throughout our district, so it is not just Douglas County, it is Cobb County as well. Critical care beds are very, very low right now. Medical search beds, we have some available, but they are also generally low. And so, it is, but before, like the last week or so, a lot of these were not just COVID people, but what we have seen in the last, this week, we have seen an increase in the number of COVID patients. But generally, the hospital beds are very busy, but it is getting extremely busy now.
Wow. The vaccine, we understand that Pfizer has come out with 90%. Is that going to be widely available, and do you know how they'll do the tier system? Will it be the elderly first, or how is that going to? Do you know a timeframe?
Yeah, why don't I let Lisa talk about a little bit of that, and then we can answer some more detailed questions.
So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Memark. As you mentioned, there's a lot of interest and excitement right now across the nation about having access to vaccine. We're watching it here locally. We're watching it very closely and developing our plans for distribution. You may see Cobb and Douglas Public Health conducting drive-through flu vaccinations and exercises so that when we get vaccine, we'll be prepared immediately to start releasing it out. We're also in the process of ordering all the supplies that we would need to be able to distribute the vaccine, and also working with local partners who might have closed pods or be able to do vaccinations of their own employees, like Wellstar Douglas, being able to do their own vaccinations. And so, all of that has been happening the past month and will continue until we have vaccine in hand. You are correct that Pfizer was coming out, and their initial reports are showing about a 90% effectiveness. That's exciting news for everybody. There's certainly more information that needs to be gathered on that before we're certain of that efficacy, but... But it certainly is exciting and preliminary information is real positive. You're correct also, Mayor, that there will be a tiered plan in releasing that vaccine. It's, right now, the plan is that for healthcare workers and long-term care residents who are extremely high-risk for virus complications will be the first to receive it. Then we move also to our first responders and people who have very front-facing, high-risk professions. And then it will tier down to other seniors, other front-facing essential workers, and then to the rest of the population. So we're hopeful that by the end of the year, we'll be able to start at least the first phase. And then it will roll out over the next few months to the rest of the population.
Thanks so much, Lisa. And then one more question, the school system, what are our numbers looking like? I know we saw the news that Cobb, I think, had five hundred cases in the school system. And so what does Douglas County school system, do we have two hundred?
Let me get those exact numbers for you. The numbers are coming in slowly. What we do know is that we work very closely with Douglas County schools. And they've done a very nice job of doing a lot of preventative measures. So having the mask in place that they have less students that are there and are able to spread the kids out. So they've been doing quite well with that. And what we aren't seeing, a whole lot of transmission within the classrooms, but we are seeing people bringing it in from outside. And so that seems to be the major vector that we're seeing. And people who, we did have, in one case, there wasn't students, there was some transmission, but it was because they weren't wearing their mask and socializing and things like that. And so we definitely, it's going pretty well right now with the school system. So we now have wood, but it's going pretty well.
Okay, and the governor's order extends, the governor's order extends to December the ninth for?
So I'll cover that in just a second, Mayor, if we can hold that one. I've got some information about the executive order.
Okay, well, I'll open the floor if we want to talk to, in between the recess before Ms. Grossman talks. Mayor Protim, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Davis? Councilmember Miller? Councilmember Burdenly? Councilwoman Watts? Councilwoman Estes? Councilwoman Adams?
Just great information and I appreciate the program being put together and it being brought to us. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. All right, Lisa, you can take it away.
So I also just wanted to give kudos out to the school systems and to the private schools in the district. As Dr. Memark said, we haven't seen a lot of transmission in the academic setting. What we're really encouraging parents and students to be careful about is the wraparound extracurricular activities like sports, sports teams, practice and games, and then just social and club activities. That's where we seem to be tracking any cases when they do occur. I did want to also address, just because of the time of the year, bring your attention to some tips for a safer Thanksgiving holiday. As you know, I've put a link on here, the CDC has come out with some real detailed, very practical, concrete ways that families can address the Thanksgiving holidays and still say safe and particularly keep their family members who are at high risk for COVID complications safe. Although the governor's executive order does limit gatherings to under fifty people, we are encouraging folks, because of the high spread and because of the chance of bringing folks in from a lot of different places in the country, that you really keep those gatherings to under ten people and ideally to your immediate household members. You know, my husband's family is all from Carrollton and a family dinner, Thanksgiving dinner with his family might include forty people over in Carrollton. So this year, we've had to really limit that. It's so terribly difficult because we have not been around family for months. But really, because of the high spread right now, we feel like we need to make that a little tighter. So we're going to have six people at our house. And so a few other ideas. One is to encourage guests to decrease their public interaction fourteen days prior to coming in for Thanksgiving. That would help reduce their risk of contracting it and then possibly transmitting it to other family members. It's not a bad idea to eat outside if the weather permits. Or if you're inside, open up doors and windows so that you can have more airflow. If you're around the table, can you put an extra leaf in the table so that you can spread folks out as much as possible? When you're not around the Thanksgiving table, can you increase your distance between your guests and have folks wear masks? That would help reduce the risk of transmission. And then just like we've been advising our restaurants over the past few months to decrease the risk of passing around serving utensils or other utensils, we encourage folks to do that in their home. So if you can have the silverware already rolled in a napkin and placed at the person's plate instead of having a whole bag of forks or a whole jar full of forks that everybody picks out of, that's encouraged, that's recommended. And then instead of having the whole potluck thing kind of spread out on a buffet area or another countertop and having everybody serve themselves with all the family members touching the same serving utensils, we encourage that you have just one person who's wearing a mask and would serve others during Thanksgiving instead of having everybody touch those utensils often. And then Dr. Memark already went over it, but it bears repeating of just remember the three W's. It truly is all we have right now. So washing your hands frequently when you're in with other family members before and after you eat. Making sure to wear masks when you're not eating or drinking. And then watching your distance and doing everything you can. You know, I have had folks over to my house, but we just sit as far apart as we can or we sit outside. It doesn't mean that you can't connect with those family members, it's just you're trying to do it as safely as possible. And then, as I mentioned, the link down here for folks who want that information in more detail, this is a great link on the CDC website to give you more details. And Dr. Memark, if you'll go next. Great. So at the end of October, you know that Governor Kemp signed in two new executive orders. The state of emergency extends through December ninth. That enables Georgia and us locally to have access to some emergency resources, like the Air National Guard, who's been going out and helping to do some testing in Douglas County. And also he extended the existing safety measures through November fifteenth. We do expect him to come out with another one next week. Those, all the guidelines that have been in place for a month or so are still in place in that executive order. You can find it on our website, you can also find it on the link that I put here on the governor's website. He still does define gathering as less than fifty people. As Dr. Memark said, I'd love to see that even less, you know, and particularly even if you're gathering with twenty-five or thirty people or even fifteen that are outside your general household group, I would still practice the three W's as much as you could. And then always remember that we're still trying to protect our medically fragile and those in our long-term care facilities. It still recommends that they shelter in place as much as possible. They are able to go seek and provide essential services and certainly earn a living, but really recommend that their activity be limited. And then all the other requirements for businesses that have been in place the last month or two are still in place for both essential and non-essential businesses, restaurants, all businesses. And so those detailed guidelines are available in that executive order.
All right, thank you so much, Lisa. We need some balloons.
Last one is just the questions.
Okay, we'll open the floor for questions from councilmembers. Any questions? We need some balloons, confetti and ice cream after that presentation. It's kind of depressing.
We just, you know what would make the difference is if we could get everybody to consistently wear their mask and watch their distance and wash their hands. Because we've seen it work, Mayor, and we just, it's so hard to keep doing it for many months. But it will work. And then once we have the vaccine, that'll be one more tool that we can use to fight this virus.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. We appreciate you, Ms. Grossman and Dr. Memark, coming to present to myself and the councilmembers tonight. It really helps us to have those statistics that we see every week come to life and be able to understand it better. Thank you for your time this evening and congratulations on a hundred years with Cobb and Douglas Public Health.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye-bye. So now we'll move on to item number five, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Protim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items under the Economic Development Committee tonight. The first item is to appoint Scott Kemp as the post-five member of the Douglasville Downtown Development Authority for a term expiring March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Chelsea Jackson?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Earlier today in your committee's meeting, you all interviewed Mr. Scott Kemp for this post. This post's expiration date is March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. He's the only individual for this post. And as I mentioned earlier, there is a vacant position, so you'll all be interviewing a few more individuals for another post for the DDA.
Any questions or comments? You said he is the only candidate for the?
For this post, yes, sir.
If it pleases the council, then we may put this on the consent agenda for Monday? Okay, thank you. The next item is to adopt, actually, the, Madam Manager, would it be sensible to put the next two items together or do they need to be read separately?
For the record, if you don't, you can discuss them together, but if you don't mind reading them separately.
Read them separately? Okay. Next item is adopt a resolution enacting a revised two thousand twenty tax plan to be administered by the Development Authority of the City of Douglasville. Mr. Chris Pumphrey has some information for us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chris.
Chris Pumphrey, Douglas County Economic Development Authority, eighty-five twelve Bowden Street. Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. We do have two items. We actually had intended on having three items, but we will get to the third item at the next, the next meeting. The first item that we do have is the revision to the tax plan, the tax plan that was done back in two thousand thirteen. So you have that tax plan in front of you. What I'm going to do is give some background on that. So when I first came to Douglasville, Douglas County, we were, from a project standpoint, a lot of what we were getting was just some warehouses and really some limited activity. And what we really wanted to do was start being more proactive in trying to recruit higher-paying, higher-skill jobs to our community versus just doing the typical, you know, warehouse-type positions. And so we revamped our incentive schedule to attract, to go after more, incentivize more higher-paying jobs and be a bit more aggressive. The reality was that Douglas County really wasn't on the radar for a lot of these more high-profile projects that were coming to the Atlanta region. And so city and county both adopted a similar tax incentive plan that was really catered to be more aggressive in that standpoint. Well, seven years later, I feel like that has been somewhat successful. We have been able to attract a lot of quality jobs and businesses to our community. And now it's time to really take another look at how we incentivize projects. And so what we did was we hired a firm, Vision First Advisors. They are based out of Northern Florida. And they came up and met with our Development Authority Board and really talked about how to revamp an incentives toolbox and what they could bring to the table. And so they worked with us on that. We wanted to make sure that we were being sophisticated with what we were offering. We were not only going to target incentives towards large companies, but we also were trying to figure out, how do we have some tools to support some smaller projects that might come along? And so that's the work that Vision First set out to do. They did some interviews here in the community. We did, we had a committee that was set up, it was about a ten-member committee. Mayor Protim was on that committee. City Manager Marshall Hampton was on that committee and a host of others from Development Authority Boards and what have you. Really just to say, what are our priorities, you know, right here in the community? And how do we want to structure our incentives to cater towards those priorities? So that was really a lot of the background that we went through in order to come up with that plan. So all that to say is we came up with a process in breaking projects down into three different tiers. Your tier one, your tier two and tier three projects. So your tier one projects are those projects that really don't show up on our target sectors. They don't, they're not the ones that we're really going out to recruit. But at the end of the day, they're seeking a property that has the zoning and you don't just want to turn your back to the businesses in your community. So what are the services and things that you can provide? So those center along the things are workforce support. How can we make sure that they're in right contact with the necessary permitting departments? Making sure that we're able to be responsive to the needs that they might have. Those are falling in your tier-one type categories. And so, for example, those are probably going to be the distribution warehouse-type, you know, projects that come along. Those are ones that would say, hey, this isn't our target, but we know that this community, you know, works for what you're trying to do. Here's how we can help support you. Your tier-two projects are the ones that fall within our target sectors. And if you don't know, I'm advanced manufacturing, professional technology services, media and entertainment. They fall within that segment. So our tax incentive plan that we already had, we're basically using that with some slight modifications. The sophistication that's added to the plan is that we are being more responsive to the type of industry that it is. So instead of just having one blanket standard regardless of the type of industry, we have different standards based on industry type. So those are the tier-two projects. One of the things that we removed from that plan was the five-year, hundred percent abatements and the ten-years. Those were kind of set aside for those transformative projects. We have removed that from the plan. So at most, a company would be eligible for would be three years. And then in addition to that, we built ourselves in a tool to have some discretionary-type grant programs. And those would typically be administered at the Development Authority level. They wouldn't necessarily rise up to council or board of commissioners. So those are your tier-twos. And then finally, the tier-threes, the tier-three projects are really what we call our transformative projects. Those that are within our target sectors but really have a transformative component to the community. They really take us to a next level, things that we really want to make sure that we get here in the community. Those are our tier-threes. So they allow for some flexibility in how we structure those plans, but it's all kind of codified in the ordinance. So you have that sheet there that shows you the tier-one, tier-two and tier-three. And then the sheet behind it really kind of breaks down how we, you know, approach the different industries from a jobs perspective and wage perspective. So I'm going to pause there. Any questions about how we went from old to new?
There, any member of the council have a question, comments?
I know, it's a lot of information, so I don't want to overwhelm you. So that's how?
I just will say that I appreciate the sophistication of the system that you're working out, that you're recommending. Having grown up in an area in Pennsylvania that was very economically distressed and pretty much any project would fall into, would be considered tier-three, you know, the communities were pretty much ready to sell their soul to get any, and those are mostly dirty industry. We call it traditionally called the dirty industries, to get some sort of economic development. And I like that, you know, we put ourselves in a position that we can pick and choose much better and especially within industries that pay higher salaries and don't require a lot of steel and coal to be extracted and put into the environment. So I'll go, I guess I'll go to the next item, which is what you're about to discuss or you have more to talk about on this?
Yeah, just to, for context, as we kind of, before I go into the next, before we go to the next agenda item, we do have, as I mentioned, we were planning to bring three agenda items today. We're only able to get to two. The item that is not on here is the incentive plan for Bang Energy, which, you know, we announced back in September, simply because we were trying to modify the tax plan and do those two projects all at the same time. Just the attorneys that were working on it just did not have the time to get it done in time to be here today. But I mention those is to say, we started the Bang Energy project last year fall. And as we were working with that project and we kind of got down to the finalist position, the plan and tools that we had in place were under the current tax plan. As we are, before we go into item B, that came in as we had finished our work with Vision First Advisors and we're working towards moving into the new tax plan. So the two different projects are kind of, will be coming under the two different groups. We couldn't, what we couldn't do is go back to Bang and say, hey, we're going to pull that off the table and then, you know, here's something new. So, but what we did do was work with them to modify it to ensure that we were definitely getting tax revenue that was coming in. So I say that now. definitely getting tax revenue that was coming in. So I, I say that now because I'm going to bring that back in probably two weeks, and you're going to say, hey, this isn't according to the plan that we did. This is done under the, the old plan. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Okay?
So I'll move on to the next item on, under Economic Development, which is to authorize the mayor to sign a tax incentive agreement with the Douglas, with the Development Authority of the City of Douglasville, the Douglas County Board of Assessors, the Douglas County Tax Commissioner, and the owner of Project Douglas. Mr. Pumphrey?
Excellent. So thank you once again. This particular project is something that we are really excited about. We believe that it will, it will address a number of things in the Riverside Corridor, and all very much positive for, for, for the community. And, you know, as we have our target sectors and we've heard loud and clear, here's the things that the community wants, and we definitely know what the community does not want. And so this is one of those things that we believe the community really wants. And so before I move any further, I'm, I'm going to ask Joe Statzenich with the Ryan Company, who is the consultant group representing Project Douglas, if they would come and just give an introduction about the project, and then I'll come back up.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Pro Tem Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members. We appreciate your time tonight. Project Douglas is a project that our client, if this site is ultimately chosen, they are looking throughout, this has been a multi-state, multi-county review of various locations, and in particular for an investment in cloud servicing and the development of a data center. As many of you may know, when it comes to cloud servicing, there's co-locations, and then there's cloud servicing. Cloud servicing is typically orientated with some of the larger firms as they have an ownership and a dedication to those specific facilities. And so as part of their contemplation of Project Douglas, they are looking at proposing an investment of $400 million over a seven year period. And the anticipation is that this investment will also coincide with the creation of 20 to 30 new positions at roughly 100,000 average salaries a year, as well as the creation of 15 to 30 vendor jobs, and ultimately the creation of 300 to 1,000 construction jobs. Many of these being essentially annualized and reappearing over a seven year period. So as part of that analysis that many of these organizations do is what they look at is what is known as total cost of ownership, which is really what is some of the carrying cost of owning a facility. And much as many of you would also contemplate and look at various homes and look at what are some of the carrying costs of those homes, and although down in the south here, it's a little bit more palatable, but where I'm from, up in Illinois, Oak Park, Illinois, I'll give you that example, which is a municipality where Frank Lloyd Wright had his offices, but it is not uncommon up there for a house that say, say values around $400,000 in value to have carrying propping taxes in the low 20,000 range. And so many of you may look at that and go, well, geez, you know what, maybe the value is all right, but the carrying cost is pretty significant. And it's one of the things that businesses need to analyze as well when making these decisions. And so from that perspective, the private partnership ultimately does help in that it does ameliorate and control some of those TCOs over a long period of time. It does allow for a business to lock in and make a decision based on what those costs will be from an annualized basis so that they ultimately can make a decision on whether to move forward with the project. So with that being said, I'll open up to see if any of you have any questions.
Questions from Mayor and Council? Appreciate the fact, coming from the land of Frank Lloyd Wright, you do also appreciate good, the value of good design, which is probably will have a lot to do with
Absolutely.
the prices that you talk about. Okay, if you have more to present on the project?
No, that's, that's all we were going to present. Just wanted to see if you all had any questions or any thoughts. Again, the, the company really appreciates your time and appreciates your deliberation in this process, and it's going to help significantly in terms of their final validation and choice location.
Mayor Pro Tem, I did have one question, just general. So I, I think from what Mr. Pumphrey has mentioned, this particular project would come in under the new agreement, when and if it is, when and if it is placed, and the one that is already, any of those that are already in the works, would come in under the old. Okay. Was there any reason other than just time passing that it would not come, it could not come under, or just wasn't able to be ready to come under the old? Just, just a general question. Is there a timing issue that they're waiting on that? The new program?
From a, from a timing perspective, it was purely in the fact that we were working through this after we had concluded our work, and we knew that the type of project that this was and what we were trying to transition away from was to ensure that we were, we were bringing tax revenue in from year one. And so that was even more, you know, a push for us to make sure that we were going under the new, the new proposed plan.
Total sense. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments?
Great explanation.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
On behalf of the City Council, I mean, assuming that we do approve the, the tax incentive structure, I mean, welcome to the community. We look forward to some exciting development and, and, you know, knowing that, I think people will be reassured knowing that no matter, no matter how big the data is, it doesn't come in, doesn't arrive on trucks. So, we're happy to hear that. Thank you so much.
Cloud.
Anything else?
I, I did want to point out, you know, Joe is very rehearsed in how he, he introduces himself. He has been a council member in his city in Illinois for how many years? 20 years.
Wow.
He's actually missing a council meeting to be here tonight.
So you understand.
Madam Mayor, the, the cloud's new address will be Douglasville, Georgia. So, something to be proud of. That is all I have under Economic Development Committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move in, then to item number six. Reverberation of these speakers behind us. My goodness. Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
We have no business tonight, Madam Mayor, under finance.
Thank you so much. Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. Authorize the mayor to sign an application for the Georgia Municipal Association Safety and Liability Management Grant. Ms. Tia Austin Bing will...
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources Department. This item before you is our annual application to apply for the Georgia Municipal Association's Safety and Liability Grant. You will find attached items across all departments that have been submitted to be considered for the total of 20,000 for the grant. Obviously, you see more, a larger amount than what the grant is for, but we still always send over to GMA what the city has purchased under these purviews for the year. Obviously, with COVID, for 2020, it has caused our departments to pretty much ramp up their safety and liability costs. So we would like to recoup some of that cost for the city in the form of the grant. This is a grant that we apply for every year so far, and we'd like to continue that. And if it is your pleasure, have this application signed so that we can move forward in the process.
Ms. Bing, did you, did you say that the grant was for 20?
It is.
Okay. Any council members, mayor, would you like to have anything? Anybody else? Sounds good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Bing. And we'll, if it's okay, we'll place this on the consent agenda for Monday. All right. Thank you. Item number two, authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the University of Georgia Research Foundation, Inc., for employee training sessions to be presented by the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. Ms. Bing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources Department. The second item before you is a memorandum of understanding from the Carl Vinson Institute of Government, who provides training and education opportunities for our local government. You may be familiar with the Carl Vinson Institute already as part of some of your training, but going into 2021, we would like to pick back up where we left off in 2020 for educational opportunities for city staff. This MOU will allow our employees to not only have educational opportunities, but to receive certifications in some area of expertise that will, just in addition to some of the trainings that they've already had a chance to take here at the city, we'd like to take that up a notch and allow these opportunities for our employees to have, again, certifications and just some meat to their training opportunities. I think it's a great MOU. We've talked to you all about this before, and this is budgeted, so it's in our training budget, and it will just allow us to move forward in 2021 with our employees and their, and their opportunities, so.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, I just, I think that the Carl Vinson Institute is an absolute gem that we have here. I mean, it's just amazing. The, the classes and educational opportunities they provided for us and for employees within the city is truly remarkable. I was just curious, is that something common amongst most states that have a version of the Carl Vinson Institute, or is Georgia kind of unique in that way?
There are certain states, probably the one that I know of that's closest is North Carolina. So with the university triangle, usually they have an education partner with their municipal association. I would say probably, probably less than a fourth of the states in the United States have the same similar type of relationship, because it really just depends on how their municipal association is, works in their state.
We're fortunate to have this. We should be very thankful for having such a good organization that we can get this kind of training. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Any other council members? So normally, any of those training employees would have gone somewhere else, and we're bringing the training here. So to Mayor Pro Tem's point, Carl Vinson Institute is, is a fantastic organization that does provide valuable training, and to bring it here is, is pretty neat. Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. And also, one more thing to add, there will be onsite opportunities, as Mr. Chairman mentioned, but there is an, an option to also have any sessions virtually, if that is how we decide to move forward. The main focus will be when we roll out, if it's your pleasure, is to pick back up with our mandatory trainings, some of the areas like diversity, harassment, ethics, customer service, supervisory tracks. Those are, will be some of the things that we will focus on beginning in 2021. So picking back up with those mandatory necessary topics. We've had quite a few new hires this year, and we just want to get back, get back on schedule and make sure that everybody's trained up.
Thank you. No other questions? I'd like to place this on the consent agenda, if that'd be okay. Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll move on to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have several items tonight under Planning and Development. We'll start with item A, enact a resolution sitting revised filing fee amounts for various applications for zoning permit plan approvals administered by the Community Development Department's Zoning Division. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. As I spoke last round of meetings, we brought this item to you all at the retreat. With COVID and everything else that happened this year, this kind of put on the back burner, but we're ready to move forward at this time. We do think these fees are in line with what the rest of metro Atlanta is doing. We're not too low, we're not too high. We do feel like we're in a comfortable position here, and so we ask for your support with this update.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Questions, council, Madam Mayor, anyone? I know we have spoken of this and have had several discussions about it, and I appreciate Ms. Williams and staff doing the homework, the hard work that it has taken to do a comparative analysis. How many years, Ms. Williams, can you tell us just for the record, roughly how many years it's been since we've made adjustments?
It's my understanding more than 10.
More than 10?
Okay. No question or comment?
Is, Mr. Chairman, is, is this going to be going into effect in January?
That's correct, Coach Watts. January 1st.
Okay. Any reason why we would not place this on the consent agenda? Seems as though everyone seems to be in agreement. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Williams. Moving on to item B, you probably don't want to go very far, Ms. Williams. Don't go out to dinner. Hold a public hearing to consider a request for a variance to reduce the required 15-foot minimum side setback in Unit 3.03B of the Unified Development Ordinance for a variance of 12 feet for a remaining requirement of three feet on the northwest side of a lot of .74 acres located at 8840 Elma Street, Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5B, Parcel 37. Application by Roosevelt Harrell. And Ms. Williams, you're going to introduce us to that.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. As the agenda item reads, the applicant is requesting a variance for property located at 8840 Elma Street. There are special conditions that exist within the existing single-family structure that may affect the applicant's ability to comply with the 15-feet side setback requirements. The existing single-family residence has a metal, metal detached carport which is uniquely positioned on the subject property that encroaches into the required 15-feet setback by 12 feet. The detached me, metal carport lot is considered non-conforming. The applicant intends to tear down and replace the structure with roof extension from the existing home to create an attached two-car garage over the existing concrete slab. The improvements will take place within the existing footprint of the structure.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. As you all know, this being a public hearing, we need to make sure that we give each and every one that may be wanting to speak concerning this item, that opportunity, and our Madam Mayor has already given us the ground rules for that. So we will open the floor to see if there is anyone that has attended tonight. I don't think the applicant is here. I do not see them. But if so, anyone that would like to speak for or against, if you would, please come forward and speak for to begin with, and if not, someone that may speak against. Seeing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for questions from council or from Madam Mayor. I do have some, but I will reserve those until we let you all speak, and then I'll, I'll make some comments. Go ahead, Coach.
It's, it's, based on what I read, this existed before this present owner that wants to make, it was already there, the driveway and everything.
That's correct.
And I also thought I read that the neighbors around him have basically signed off on it and said that they're okay with it, or...
That's what we've been told. We don't have anyone here tonight to confirm it, but that's what we were told by the applicant.
Thank you.
Anyone? Question I wanted to ask? Let, let me, let me, first of all, for transparency sake, transparency sake, make sure that I make this known, and I've sought advice from our council. The neighbor to the north of this property is a family member of mine, and Ms. Littlefield suggested that it was not necessary for me to recuse myself from having the hearing and from, and from handling the hearing for this. But there are some things that, in my visit to the property today, after looking at the plaid and being somewhat familiar with this, I want to make sure everyone is, is familiar with what's happening. I was disturbed to, to see, first of all, that, that there was a request to give an 80% variance to go from 15 to 3. I thought that was a little much, because if you think about just the possibility of pushing a, one of our trash receptacles around the corner of the building, you're, you're almost, it's almost impossible to do, much less cut or maintain. Okay? With only a three-foot sideline, I mean, let's, let's face it, that's 36 inches. So I decided after reading that yesterday, I, I went over... So I decided after reading that yesterday, I went over this morning and I, or this afternoon, and I actually met with the applicant, and I met with my sister-in-law, who is the owner of the adjacent property, and they are not at odds. The issue is that that carport facility that they speak of and that you see on the plat, that is actually attached to the concrete with bolts, so it could very easily be taken away, and it is basically what I would call, it could be considered a piece of personal property if you wanted to take it down. It's that easy. It's a portable carport that you see all over our community for storage or for safety out of the weather, so to speak. So I spoke with Mr. Harrell, and I spoke with my sister-in-law, and the ambiguity of the application concerns me in that a double garage could be of various sizes. There's no size here, there's no limit here, there's no dimensions here given. And in fact, when you actually go there and you place a tape on it, the applicant has said, and I don't see it here, but he has said that he wants to build an attached garage, which means he would be attaching the structure permanently to the house, and therefore, if he, if he were allowed to install a garage 22 feet by 22 feet, which is what he has said in our conversations, then he would not need a variance of that much. I want us to be careful that we try to accommodate, and I believe that he is well within his right to request that. I've just never personally been involved where I asked for a variance of that amount, especially in a residential area with other homeowners of something like that. And I've never sat in these meetings and been asked to give that, okay? So I just want everyone to know for transparency's sake, and of course, Mr. Harrell had, he had to be at work at 3 o'clock, so he could not be here tonight. I didn't find it necessary for my sister-in-law to attend. So with that said, I have, I have asked staff to consider possibly changing that variance to an amount sufficient for him to replace his carport with a permanent structure, which I think would be great, and therefore not need the variance in that amount. Can we consider changing that variance amount from a 12-foot variance to a 8-foot variance and leave then a 7-foot sideline, so that you would have, you would at least be able to drive a lawnmower or walk around with a trash receptacle without actually being on an adjacent property on this property? This, this is something that's concerning to me, that we need to be careful when you're in an area with a 15-foot sideline, and all of a sudden you give someone a variance that, that they can be within three feet of the property line. That, that building, or that temporary structure of a carport is not three feet from the property line. And I think the, what Mr. Harrell was looking for was a, to make sure he had enough that he could put the garage basically in the same spot where the carport now sits, and he can, and attach it to the home, which is what he chose to do. So I'll open the floor for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for recognizing me, and I appreciate all the work that you've done to come up with the resolution. And it seems like it works for everyone with this. Mr. Harrell, is it okay with the eight, 8-foot setback rather than 12?
Yes, ma'am. His contractor was there on site today, and we actually did some, some measurements and had pulled, had pulled a string down the property line, and he has no problem with that. He just turned in the application to staff and told them what he wanted to do, and I'm sure that no harm, no foul was meant by asking for a variance of that amount. But it just seems odd to me personally that we would grant something like that with only a three-foot sideline remaining because of what that does to you, limiting your access.
Okay, and?
He has no problem with it.
Okay, great. Now, would we have to re-advertise, or how does that, do we put a sign out the yard, or how does that work? Ms. Littlefield?
No, ma'am. As long as you're within what has been advertised or less, no re-advertising is necessary, as long as you're not doing something new.
Okay, great.
So just, just to make, for clarity, and I have not spoken with Ms. Littlefield about this. I just met with the staff this afternoon. As long as we're not giving more than what was advertised, we're fine. We can actually condition it to less, correct?
Yes, sir, and I believe you want to condition it on his building a permanent garage and removing the carport, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I, I understand, too, you want to condition it on building a permanent garage and removing the carport that's there. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, and it be attached to, to the structure, to the home.
We'll fix it up for you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, Coach?
Sure. So if he attaches this, this garage to the house, would the outer edge or the outer wall of the garage be right there where the, where I see the cement ends? And would that put him still within that seven feet? Like, in other words, is the outer edge of that carport driveway cement the seven feet, or where, you know, or is it?
He had stated in his request, I believe, or at least in conversations that I had had, that he wanted to stay on the existing concrete. And that building, that temporary structure you see on page six is within that. It sits on the concrete, but it's just bolted down.
Right.
So actually, if you, if you look to the right, where you see the, the distance between the vertical members of that carport and, and actually intersecting the house, what we measured was 22 feet from the corner of the house out, and you would be about two feet to the right of the left vertical members. So you, yes, you would remain on the existing concrete. Yes, which is, right. And, and for, and I think the reason, more than likely, that he asked for a three-foot side setback was because his vertical members there on the carport are three or four feet away from the property lines. He just said, hey, I need, I need a variance of 17 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other?
Just a question. Is there any reason why the applicant's not here?
He had to work.
Oh.
He is at work. I did speak with him this afternoon, and I don't know that he really felt as though he needed to be here.
Well, we, we definitely give them the schedule, so he knew about the hearing.
Yes. When, when I spoke with him this afternoon on site, he did not appear to realize that it was tonight. He thought it was just Monday from my conversation with him. So hopefully, he will be able to be here on Monday, and you all won't be asked to take my word for it. Other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Williams, and we'll take that up on Monday night then. We'll go on to item C. Once again, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to reduce the required 50-foot minimum front setback in Section 3.03B of the Unified Development Ordinance for a variance of 15 feet for a remaining requirement of 35 feet on the east side of a lot of .736 acres located at 8840 Hamilton Street in Land Lot 22, District 1, Section 5. I believe that's supposed to be Parcel 5B rather than 5. It has been changed on the paperwork. Parcel 46, application by Mark and Tasha Van. Ms. Williams, you're going to introduce us to that.
Yeah, Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. As the agenda item reads, the applicant is requesting a variance for property located at 8840 Hamilton Street. There are special conditions and circumstances that exist within the existing single-family structure that may affect the applicant's ability to comply with the 50-feet front yard setback requirements. Number one, the existing single-family residence is uniquely positioned on the subject property in relation to the overall size of the lot. The structure is situated close to the street frontage of Hamilton Street, instead of being positioned in the middle of the lot. This lends to potential ingress, egress concerns for the residents regarding traffic onto Hamilton Street, which is a relatively busy street. There is a large, number two, there's a large and healthy tree on the property which affects the applicant's ability to position the proposed detached garage on another part of the property. Number three, there are topo issues due to the sloping of the rear yard. And finally, the applicant is making renovations to make the property ADA accessible to accommodate a special needs child, and placing the garage in a conforming part of the property would affect the applicant's ability to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So we'll go to the public hearing part of this, and I, I see that Mr. Van is here in the audience. Mr. Van, do you have some things you would like to present, just if so, if so, just come forward and give us your name and address for the record. We'd like to hear from you.
Thank you so much. My name is Mark Van, and I live at 8840 Hamilton Street in Douglasville. And like Ms. Williams just said, I am seeking to build a detached garage. We've purchased our home there on Hamilton Street back in November. We did some renovations to it on the inside to get it the way we wanted it, and then we moved into the property in January. We're actually in the middle of a renovation, a small renovation in the master bedroom currently. And during the permit process, we realized that, because we wanted to do both of these projects at the same time, but we realized that because we have a corner lot, we're on the corner of Hamilton and Cornelia, that the setback for the front yard is also the same setback for my side yard, since I am on a corner lot. So my first plan didn't work because I was basically all in the setback, and, you know, of course, we don't want to do that. So we readjusted our plan to try to make it the most conforming that we can make it and still hold the integrity of the neighborhood and, you know, keep my wife happy, basically, and everybody understands that. But so because we have a special needs child, the reason why we're doing a garage in the first place is because my house is scooted all the way to the front of the lot, and the garage is located on the right side of the house, and the entrance to the driveway is on the left side of the lot. So you basically have to come off a busy Hamilton Street or turn into from Hamilton Street onto my garage, or into my driveway, excuse me, make a 90-degree turn, go along the front of the house, make another 90-degree turn to the left, go inside the garage. I have a special needs child. I was hoping that my wife, Tasha, and Cameron were going to be able to hang out for a minute, but it was a little bit long for them to hang out, so Cameron was trying to run the meeting, so they left. But anyway, so our, our current situation, I can't really expand my garage to the left, because then I'd be an issue there. I can't really go forward, and I, even if I went backward, that wouldn't help my ADA problem. So right now, if we try to push Cameron in the existing garage up the ramp, it's like Six Flags, because it's just too close. So what we're trying to do is position our new detached garage in such a way that angles, and we're trying to fit it in between the large tree that we have in the back. If it wasn't for that tree, I would just scoot it further back, and I wouldn't be in the setback. But farther and farther towards the back of the lot you go, it slopes down, so it's more expensive and just, plus it wouldn't look well. So what we did was try to come up with a local design, with a local architect here in town, to try to fit all that in, and, you know, we're, we're basically 27 feet or 25 feet or something like that on the front of the house. On the other side of the house, opposite of this, on the right side of our property, we're around 25 feet or something like that. I don't have all those measurements in front of me. And on this side of the property, we're going to be approximately 35. So we're certainly not trying to make it more cumbersome over the boundaries than what already exists. And I also, a couple of my neighbors wrote letters on our behalf that said they are excited about the project and wish we'd hurry up and finish it. So I brought those for each of you guys, if you wanted a copy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, madam mayor, if you'll look on page 21 of our packet, there is a very good scale drawing of what is, what is present on Mr. Van's property now and what his desire would be. I want to bring to your attention one thing, if you'll notice. The house is sitting 27.2 feet at some point of the house before you even get to the garage on the right off Hamilton Street now. So that would be considered a non-conforming situation to begin with. And the corner lot that he's speaking of, cornering on Cornelia, then I would assume from the drawing, the new driveway would come in off of Cornelia so that you would not have them entering and exiting on Hamilton Street. And with that, I'll open the floor for questions. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Comments?
Comment?
Yes, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've done a lot to try to accommodate, which is great, and to make it look nice, and I think it'll be less cumbersome, and Hamilton Street is, is a busy street. So Cornelia would probably be better. I wish you the best with your, with your son.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, you really kind of got stuck with a peculiar layout on that property. And I'm, I'm almost curious to offline to find out how it got laid out, laid out the way it did, but I, I do, looking at the way you've got the site plan drawn now, it seems to be a pretty clever solution to, to work as a workaround without imposing too much into the, into the setback area, so. No, I think, I think it's, I think it's a viable solution, what you've got. And your topography is fairly flat on that side, or?
So the more you go towards the tree, the more it dips down.
Okay, so it starts dropping off toward the back?
And also, I forgot to mention that on our existing addition that we're, it's not really, it was a very small addition, like 10 feet or whatever, towards the back of the lot that, that is on their existing, or that we're doing right now. We have an entrance that, so that way, when you come out of the proposed new garage, you will, you know, it'll be flat to the ground, and we'll be able to push Cameron along a sidewalk and then up a ADA ramp into our master bedroom, basically, which is the back corner of the house. So, you know, it wasn't ideal, but it was the best we could do with what we have, and this is our forever home, so we just were, you know, going to make it work for long-term for her, so.
That looks pretty, pretty decent.
If I might add there, Mr. Miller, that 10-by-16 room addition on the back that is connected to the, the new garage, proposed garage with the concrete, that's the addition that he's speaking of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments?
Only thing I would add, just in the future, have your architect sign his work.
Others?
Good point.
Do we have anyone in the audience that would speak either for or against this application for variance? Please come forward. Seeing none of them, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and are there any other questions or comments that counsel or madam mayor may have? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take this up on Monday. Mr. Van, thank you for coming in. We have one other. We'll hold a public hearing and consider a proposed ordinance to amend Section 6.03 of the Unified Development Ordinance to revise provisions relating to the flood hazard district and to amend the definition of new manufactured home park or subdivision in Section 13.02 of said ordinance, application by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. I brought this item to you the last round of meetings. We received a letter from the Georgia Department of Announcer Resources asking us to do some changes or make some changes to our UDO as it relates to definitions for floodplains and so on. And so Ms. Littlefield and our building official, Mike Mettler, worked on this ordinance together, and so we're pretty happy where we landed with this, and so we ask for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. It being a public hearing, we do need to give the opportunity for anyone to speak for or against. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments that counsel or madam mayor may have of Ms. Williams? Sounds like a housekeeping situation, just an update. None? Okay. And we will take that up on Monday, and that would complete the work this evening, madam mayor, under Planning and Development.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We move on to Public Improvements and Buoyification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a couple items this evening. And the first is to adopt a resolution enacting a new fee schedule for the city sanitation services to be effective January 1st of 2021. And I realize now, I may have jumped ahead of myself a little bit in committees. I know Greg Roberts is still here. If you guys have any more questions about this fee schedule or comments? If not, are you guys still okay with putting that on the consent agenda? Perfect, thank you. Next, we have to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 34, Article 1, Division 1 of Community Development Ordinance to revise provisions relating to Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board and to revise an appointment assignment for one existing board member. And we do have Ms. Chelsea Jackson here to tell to us about that.
Yes, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Before you, mayor and counsel, you have two attachments. The first attachment is a red line version of the ordinance. The second attachment is the final revision. I'll go through that red line revision, and then at the end, if you have any questions, just let me know. So this, basically, a couple of best practices changes that we're, best practices that we're proposing to change as well as a few housekeeping items. I just want to note that none of, none of the changes will affect anyone who currently serves on the board. So the first change you will see is basically changing the title from Executive Coordinator to Direct- So the first change you will see is basically changing the title from Executive Coordinator to Director. If you all remember a couple of years ago, the city did do a pay and classification study where the Keep Douglasville Executive Coordinator title was changed to Director. So that's just one housekeeping rule we're changing that throughout that ordinance. As well as, instead of eight voting members, the board will now have seven voting members and one non-voting member, who will be that, um, Ms. Chan Weeks of the, uh, Keep Douglasville Beautiful Executive Director. She will serve as that non-voting member. Um, and she'll be the Secretary Treasurer, so she'll do some hu- housekeeping, um, as well as do the budget every year for them as well as keep up that treasury report every year for them as well and minutes throughout the meetings. Um, the qualifications to be a board member will now include being an employee of a business in the City of Douglasville. And that's just best practices that we saw, um, throughout any of the Keep Beautiful America boards as well. Um, and then also, there were never any established terms of office. When this was first enacted, I would say about twenty years ago, the proposed terms now are for three years each and a member can serve two consecutive terms. As well as the last change we're proposing is that if any board member is absent from three consecutive meetings of the board, then the director should notify leadership and recommend removal for cause of that member. And those are the changes that staff is recommending. I have spoke with Ms. Weeks and Mr. Greg Roberts, and they're in agreeance with the changes to this ordinance as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much for explaining that so well for us. Um, are there any questions or comments from counsel? No? Okay. Well, with that being said, are you guys okay if we put this on the consent agenda? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. We'll move on to Public Relations Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Sam Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item, uh, three items tonight, I'm sorry, three items. Item A is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the National Center for Safety Initiatives LLC for criminal background check services for sports coaches for youth athletic teams. And Mr. Bass is going to present to us.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Chris Bass, eight-eight-thirty Gurley Road. We are here to, um, enter in, seek, enter into agreement with the, uh, National Center for Safety Initiatives in order to conduct our background checks for our volunteer co- back, um, volunteer coaches. This agreement, uh, will be consistent for all of our athletic sports ring in-house and could also be utilized by those, um, ran outsourced, like for example, the Tiger Cubs and, um, any other, uh, organizations that we partner with to, um, provide youth sports. One of the reasons we're looking at doing this is to not just stay consistent with best practices, but next practices amongst this nation. Right now, NCIS currently does provide, um, background checks, um, for about thirty-five hundred parks and recreation systems across the United States. Um, here locally in Georgia, they provide checks for about forty-plus, um, cities and counties. Um, so we're just trying to stay consistent and, um, make sure that we're protecting our youth. One of the biggest things or advantages for, um, entering to, into this agreement is that this background check goes beyond our current, um, state background check. This one is a national check and also, um, there's a sex offender registry. And it's more convenient and conducive for the volunteers where they're actually able to go in and, um, complete all the information online. They're able to submit documentation, so we don't have to require, uh, require, um, social security numbers or, um, uh, birth certificates or, or any type of personal information. It's all ran through this, uh, particular system. Whereas we have had to do that before. One of the issues we were having before is, um, getting that notarized form back. So, um, entering in, once we, uh, enter into this agreement upon approval, then the volunteers will be able to do that themselves. So, um, it's just more so of us trying to make sure that we're, um, doing what's best for our youth. And as we prepare to expand our youth sports, trying to make sure that, um, we're bringing some camaraderie and making sure that we are staying consistent with our national accreditation, as this is one of our, our standards, volunteer management.
Mr. Bass, uh, just a quick question. It looks, so the, the fee, the, the way it's set up is no annual fee and it's eighteen dollars fifty cents per however many you do during the year and that amount is projected, not necessarily?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, um, we, we've got average in here, like you say, it's eighteen dollars and fifty cent per volunteer. One of the additional benefits of this is it doesn't, it's not limited to just, um, youth coaches. We, um, we do require background checks for our, um, program vendors like jazzercise and, um, uh, aerobics boot camps and things like that. So we'll also be able to vet those volunteers and those vendors through this, um, same system as well. So, um, that could vary, but it's eighteen fifty.
And one of the differences between the way it's been done is that this will be a national background check, so it'll extend even further.
Correct. It expand, extends beyond Georgia, so that's a really big advantage for us.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor, do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I do. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bass, for the information. It was very, um, helpful. I do have a question. I know we had a discrepancy at the beginning of the season, uh, with one of our, um, affiliations. Did we get that ironed out? I think they said they had already paid and then we provided the service and charged them and so what was?
Yes, ma'am. We did get that ironed out. And that was one of the reasons why I mentioned, uh, not alongside our in-house programs, we're able to use this, um, same software with our, uh, outside vendors as well. So yes, ma'am, but we did get that ironed out.
So will they be aware of when they apply, like for the soccer league and, and Tiger Cubs and basketball, whomever, recreational baseball, that they'll know they have to go through this?
Yes, ma'am. And our athletic coordinator will make sure they communicate that information with those representatives.
And we, we're implementing it for next year or?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's more so trying to go ahead and start in, in the event that we're able to roll out sports. So I'm starting in January in-house, trying to go ahead and, um, get the ball rolling on this.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other questions from counsel? All right. I'd like to place this on the consent agenda, if that'd be okay? Thank you, Mr. Bass. Appreciate it. Uh, item B is appoint Craig Bell as the post-three member of the Douglasville Public Art Commission for a term ending July first, twenty-twenty-two, and Ms. Jackson will speak on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. As you all know, the last post, um, that has not been filled for the Public Arts Commission is post-three. And that is for the Downtown Development Authority member. So, um, that board met on Tuesday and they recommended for counsel to approve Mr. Craig Bell to serve in this capacity until July one, twenty-twenty-two.
It's my understanding he's the only, I, I mean, uh, thi- this particular post is always filled by the Downtown Development Authority?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, good. And he, he drew the short straw or they, they picked him?
I, I'm unsure. I believe he drew the short straw this time.
Well, we, we appreciate him, uh, being willing to do it and, uh, thank you. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I did. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Bell is, he works for Georgia Power, but he lives in the city limits in the tributary.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I was just making certain we knew that he, um, he works for, uh, a corporation, but he also lives in the cities that, uh,
Yes, ma'am. And that's one of the requirements for the Downtown Development Authority is to live in the city or own a business in the downtown area and live in the county.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions on Mr., about Mr. Bell? All right. And since he's the only one that will be appointing from, for post-three, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. And, uh, our second, our, uh, item C is reappoint Michael Carcy to retail two posts of the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. Um, this appointment is for, to reappoint Mr. Michael Carey. He currently serves in their role in their retail two posts, which is usually the mall post. He currently serves as the general manager. Um, when he was appointed last time, he was filling the unexpired, unexpired term. So this will be his first term, full term, that will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And there are no other individuals that represent the mall to cover this post.
Okay. Any questions from, uh, Mayor or Counsel? Anybody? All right. Uh, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Uh, we will place this also on the consent agenda for Monday. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach Watts. We'll move on to Technology Committee, that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you so much, Councilman Miller. Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShandra Danley.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Any other business to come before counsel tonight from council members? I did have a quick, um, we were talking about this background investigation. City manager, do we require background checks for our other boards or that volunteer boards like the DDA or HPC or any of those boards?
No, ma'am, we do not. We don't do a background check on those, on those individuals.
Um, do other cities? Do we know, is that best practices or we just don't do that?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I can have, um, Ms. Jackson, she may already have the information on which ones, uh, that do. But I'm not aware of any that actually perform background checks.
Um, just like City Manager said, I don't know any cities. I have contacted cities when we were doing best practices and changing ordinances to see what they do. None of them do because they're volunteer positions. So they just stated, a lot of them, of course, don't get compensated and they don't do background checks because that's another, um, that'd be a budget. They have to budget out of that actual authority or board or out of the city's budget.
Okay. And the other background checks is because those individuals interact with children? Okay. All right, thank you. Any business from council members for the body? Okay, we'll move on. Um, updates from city staff, um, our city attorney, Mr. Dotson, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Chief of Police, Chief Sparks, Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our City Manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What? Okay. Staff reports. Do you have any staff reports?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. Um, comments from citizens and delegates? You have lasted until the entire meeting and you want to come and address the council. You have five minutes to talk to us about in business remain to the City of Douglasville. Ms. Uh, Jackson, we have anyone online? Okay. Well, if we don't have anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.